They're saying no sound.
Okay.
There she is.
Hi.
Hi Holly, Holly's present.
Okay. Rosie Pryor.
Here.
Steve Mattel.
Here.
Angela Van Kraus.
Present.
So I am not sure if I heard Austin respond. I understand Board Member Fullnagy is on his way. And I would like to share with you his suggestion that at the start of this evening's meeting, that we take a moment of silence, and not only for students who have lost their lives to violence in recent weeks, but to all who have lost their lives to violence in this country in recent weeks and months. So if you would join me and Austin in a moment of silence. Thank you. Is Tracy Weimer with us? There's Tracy. Tracy's going to read our land recognition.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. So I reached out to Celia because the Diversity Council is working on a land back statement. So if you don't mind when I'm done reading the acknowledgement, I'd like to add what the Diversity Council is considering. And just ask you to also consider land back rather than just land acknowledgement. If you have more interest in how that conversation came about, I invite you to attend a Diversity Council meeting. And I want to point out that the language is modeled in linguistic justice. Okay. So let's start our meeting with the acknowledgement that the land where we are on are the traditional homelands of the Kalapuya people. The Kalapuya currently are and have been stewards of this very land for over 14,000 years before their traditional way of life was forever disrupted and destroyed. We start our meeting with humility and reverence for the original inhabitants, the Kalapuya. Moreover, we support the reclamation of the Kalapuya's original land, language, ceremonies, food, education, housing, healthcare, governance, medicine, kinship, and cultures. The Kalapuya have a long legacy of freedom, life, and culture, and deserve sovereignty over that. But those last two sentences are what the Diversity Council is considering adding to the land acknowledgement to make it a land back statement.
Thank you very much. I know the board will want to consider that going forward.
That's why I thought I would help share that with you tonight. Thank you so much for letting me read and share that. Have a good night.
Austin has joined us remotely. He's a participant in the attendees box, but he'll be here shortly.
Welcome, Austin. Is there, are there any changes or additions to this evening's agenda? There being none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Steve? Thank you, Holly. Will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mike Eister.
Aye.
Lisa Fragala.
Aye.
Austin Fullnagy.
Aye.
Holly Johnson.
Aye.
Rosie Pryor.
Aye.
Steve Mattel.
Aye.
Angela Van Kraus.
Aye.
The motion carries, which brings us to our discussion items, the first of which is fiscal year 23 budget and tuition discussion. President Balter?
Yes, we have brought some information to the board for discussion about the fiscal year 23 budget and also some projections for fiscal year 24. I'm wondering if Tatiana Baktina can come to the podium and assist us with this presentation. So we are going to start with a report on the fiscal year 23 and also fiscal year 24 budget. And we will continue with that and continue with a tuition discussion. And what we're attempting to do tonight is provide information to the board for its consideration. But of course, no decisions to be made this evening.
Good evening. I'm Tatiana Baktina. I'll be talking about projections for current fiscal year, next slide, please. And preliminary projections for fiscal year 23, 24. So for current fiscal year, we're looking at, right here is the general fund in sort of like an orange orange column. I will start with 5% credit change. And this is basically good news, we're trending up 5% credit changes from last year from FY '22. And we have the budget CCSF shares set for six, can you go up, please? Okay, just right there, that's good. So we know that we're receiving, the state budget is $699 million. And our allocation to the Lincoln New College is 8%. So I'm just going to go through the lines. You know, we get property taxes estimated at $24.5 million. We have a little bit of federal stimulus funding left. We estimating $800,000 so far, but we're still kind of looking at different things that can happen. And that number could go up, actually. So tuition and fees are projected for current fiscal year at that level, since we're trending up at $21.8 million, same as student fees projected based on credit enrollment growth. Other fees and charges are at that level based on the information and the factors that we know so far. So we're kind of looking how we're trending and estimating based on that. So administrative recovery is the same, we're just estimating, looking at everything, analyzing what we're bringing in and what it's going to look like at the end of this fiscal year. Same as other revenue, it's a little bit higher than last year based on the trend, current trend, so that's good news. Sales of goods and services, we're estimating be a little higher than last year. Then operating transfer in line is close to what we had last year, and you know, it's just transfers. So we said budget transfers each year, we adopt them, and we get pretty close to what we budget each year. So we go to personnel contracted, this is based on current position list. So for this current year, same as personnel part-time, we're looking at the trend, looking at part-time assignments for faculty. And the OPE rate is based, our current OPE rate was set last year. So we set them around March. So, and then OPE rate is applied to the total personnel cost and estimated at $27.3 million. So materials and services, a little higher, we're trending that way right now. So we return to campus and that could be the trend. We also, the inflation, so things cost a little more than before. So then the next line is operating transfers out. And there's a difference from the year of 2022. And I can talk about that, I'm just, I'm just going to give you an overview. So then total expenditures, and then you see the net, how we projecting to end this fiscal year. So at the current trend, we're projecting the negative balance, which then you can see beginning fund balance and general fund from prior year is, we started at $8.093 million. And with the current trend, that would be an effect on the ending fund balance this year. And then the next column next to it is kind of dark blue, it's a similar approach, except there are some factors that we estimated our preliminary projections on 2%, 2% growth, growth, 2% growth from current year in credit, based on how we're trending right now, it's pretty conservative. So at 2%, if everything goes the same way it is this year, then that could be even higher. But we've just been conservative at this point. We have the governor's recommended budget bottom at $759.7 million. So that's what we used in this projections, because we still, and Brett will talk about this later, it's still unknown what will happen to that. We estimate our share of CCSF to stay the same at 8% because we are growing. But the way formula is set, they look at prior years, three years of weighted average. So I plugged numbers in the formula, trying to see where we're going to get, and it gave me 8.0, it didn't give me 8.1. So, but we're looking at all the trends and that could change too. So the taxes are pretty predictable. So we estimated 3.5, that's what the HECC recommends as well. Federal stimulus is going away next year. So then we get to other lines, tuition is based on total credit that we project, student fees, other fees and charges. And admin recovery, so far we're keeping at the same projection at this year on the factors that we know. Same with other revenue, so the changes would be transfers in is projected to decrease. And the reason is, as you know, we sold purse bonds. And we estimate the savings from the sale of purse bond to help us with our OPE rates. So we, preliminary OPE rates that we set so far, they're not final rates, are 64% for full-time and 38% for part-time, which is less than what we set for this year. And so purse stabilization reserve fund that the board decided to set aside a while back in Fund IX to help offset the OPE rate costs, transferring $860,000 each year. We, at this moment, we're still evaluating this, but it looks like we might not need to do the transfer. And because our OPE rates are going down. And so far, we're looking at, that the sale of, the savings from selling the purse bonds supposed to be bigger than the cost of that debt that we have to pay. So looking at all these factors, looks good, and we might discuss it later and see if we need to transfer purse reserve to general fund or keep it in Fund IX in case something changes and we might need it later. It would be at administration discussion, I'm just providing you with that information. So, and again, for personnel, for contracted personnel, we have the number, there is a total number at the current position list. Part-time, and we estimate it a little higher, but it's, again, it's just projections, preliminary projections, and the OPE rate, the projected rate is applied to the total personnel cost. Materials and services a little higher than this year. And so then we get to operating transfers out. We don't have them set yet, you know, we have to include major maintenance and debt services to calculate that. We just got our audit reports, so yay, we can look at the debt services. And so if we're trending that way, then we're projecting a deficit of $4 million next fiscal year. And the effect on the fund balance would be pretty dramatic. Not trying to be dramatic, but we're basically, at this rate, we'll have $1 million left in the general fund balance.
Before we move on, Tatiana, I'm wondering if the board has questions about what they've heard today? Just to provide a bit more context, you know, I know you know that the $759 million is what the governor suggested as the budget. We think it's going to be higher, but we're not sure at this point in the process. And the end of the fiscal year 23, we are projecting what's going to happen between now and the end of the year. Not quite sure about that. We're also projecting what's going to happen for fiscal year 24. So with all of that, all of those variables that are in play, then we certainly would love to take your questions about what all of these numbers mean.
Board members, questions?
Quick comment. Yeah, and I think that we can take these numbers to our elected officials up in Salem and say that, hey, these are, this is going to help us determine what is going to be our tuition. And you have a big decision to make as far as when you're creating the budget for the HECC and for higher education and so forth. So I'd like to take this opportunity as an open letter to our elected representatives that, hey, you play a big part in which scenario plays out here.
Austin, other comments, questions, Steve? Keep going.
Okay, so next slide is Fund IX. And we're taking the same approach, just looking at all the factors. We do not receive state funding or property taxes in Fund IX. So it's mostly self-supporting programs, as you know, we have KLCC international programs. We have flight technology, we have child and family center in Fund IX, and we have health clinic and student club. So mostly programs that support their operations by the revenue that they bring. So we do have some instructional element in Fund IX, so mostly programs that. So that's, that's why we have tuition from international programs there, student fees, other fees and charges are the same. And tracking and looking at what's coming in. And same for other revenue lines, operating transfers in, that in 2022, you see $1.9 million transfer that came from the general fund. And that was the stabilization reserve that the board implements via policy because we were projecting surplus in Fund One, and it was set aside last year to help with the general fund expenditures. So we not, we don't have the stabilization reserve to transfer in this year or next year. And that's why there's zeros there. And so same personnel contracted on the current position list. And the OPE rates at the projected rates, materials and services a little higher, international programs had accounting change. So we're projecting the cost to be a little higher there. And so that's, so far, that's what we're looking at right now in Fund IX. Deficit about $2 million this year and $1.1 million next year. And then the Fund IX beginning and ending fund balances projected. And then you can see the beginning and ending purse reserves there. So not transferring anymore out of purse reserve this year, next year. If we're not going to do that, that's what we're going to have there, 1.2.
Question, is this 1 million, 1.131 million in addition to the four you predicted on the general fund?
This is just in Fund IX. Yeah, so two separate ones, I separated them to kind of have much.
So now we're looking at over $5 million deficit.
In fiscal year 24.
I'm sorry?
In fiscal year 24 is what I understood.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Before we move on to the next document in the packet, we want to check in and see if there are any questions about what's on this page for Fund IX. Please go on, Tatiana.
Okay. So next slide, please. Thank you. This slide is just, it talks about BP 245 ending fund balance policy for general funds. And what we're supposed to have is 10% and we're aware, and if you scroll down a little bit, thank you, right there, it's just where we, where we started this year, a little bit less than 10%. Estimated deficit for this year, and then where are we going to end this year with that deficit and what percentage is of that 10%? And what we need to get to 10%?
Steve?
I'm sorry, I have a question on the previous slide, apologize. Huge, yeah, right there, sorry, scroll up a bit, there you go, thanks Brett. Would you just explain these last few lines, the beginning purse reserve of 2 million in the last fiscal year and then ending with no reserve whatsoever projected at the end of the next fiscal year?
Oh, okay, sorry, that might be my bad. So we're not going to transfer anything, so the beginning purse reserve last fiscal year was $2 million. We did transfer 860 out of this reserve to general fund, so it reduced the balance. This year, if we don't do it, it's going to stay at 1.2. So I just.
So the ending purse reserve in the next fiscal year, you left, it's not, we're not saying it's zero, we're saying we're not sure what we're going to do yet. Okay, thank you.
And if we decide not to touch it and then maybe build it up a little bit to see how this OPE rates and sell purse bond sale will help us, you know, we can start building it a little bit because it's my understanding that what board wanted when they established this.
I have a question. Is it the case that when we talk about the beginning fund balance and the ending fund balance, that's a decision that hasn't yet been made? What I mean by that is there's the option to use the ending fund balance to balance the budget, but there's also the option to balance the budget using other means.
I would say that that is accurate.
So this description assumes that the board will approve dipping into the ending fund balance to balance the budget?
For Fund IX or for the general fund or Fund IX?
Either one, I mean, doesn't it show that in both cases?
In the general funded. In the general funded, does, right?
In the general fund, what happens within fiscal year, if our expenditures are higher than our revenue, we are dipping into fund balance, we're kind of spending it. So with the purse reserve, we can decide if we don't need to transfer it because OPE rates are low, we can keep it in Fund IX. But with the fund balances in general in each fund, that's what happens. We kind of, we project, we put the adopted budget there. And then in-year revenues and expenses, how we tracking then? That could be that our fund balance, how deficit could be less. So then it's, it's kind of sort of a better effect on the fund balance in a way.
Lisa?
So we only have an ending fund balance policy for the general fund, not for IX, right? But, you know, referencing what Rosie said, you know, these are projections. And there's a lot of things that are, that could change. The governor's budget could change, there could be one-time funding coming from the state legislature. There could be increases in enrollment, which will increase the amount of tuition dollars we have. There could be a tuition increase, which would increase the tuition dollars. So this is just kind of like a flat picture of a projection. There's going to be a lot of board decision happening in that time being. May I ask another question? I am curious in Fund IX, like in the past, we've heard a lot of referencing, or we've had a lot of conversation about the impact of Titan Court on this particular fund. And I'm curious where that plays out in the description here.
Titan Court Housing?
Yes.
So Titan Court is actually in Fund VI.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for the question, thank you, thank you so much. Please go on to, we've covered the next page, it's on page six, four, excuse me. Let's go to page five.
Okay, page five, this is the budget parameters that board set at the beginning of this fiscal year. And I just put them there for your review, that, you know, we're looking at different revenue levers. We will need guidance on tuition, and we're looking at auxiliary revenue, different contracts. See if our enrollment increase will go, we're hoping it's more than 3.5. And then expense levers are major maintenance levers, compensation and benefits, and also fund balance and fund balance reserves. So looking at the board policies. And maybe there are other opportunities that we can find too.
And this information is, just as a reminder of the budget parameters that the board set for us a few months ago.
And did those parameters include a $2 million budget for compensation benefits? I don't see that identified here.
Absolutely, the number is not there, but it's under other considerations.
Okay.
And that's the marker that we're using.
Scenarios.
Scenarios, tuition scenarios.
I'm sorry, one other question before we go to the scenarios. So I see expense lever, major maintenance. It, so, okay, there is a lever there. Did we set some goals for what we would spend on maintenance? We've been advised, right, that we're underspending on maintenance. And I just want to ask, does the 24 projected budget includes the, you know, what is recommended? Or something more consistent with what we've been investing?
Well, we haven't made any determinations, we have nothing to bring to the board for its consideration as a recommendation. With regard to major maintenance, we certainly will likely include that because we will not want, we will not want no deferred maintenance to be taken care of. But.
But isn't it, I mean, there's something baked into the 24 budget for maintenance right now, right?
It's based on the current year.
So it's just a carry, just the same amount? So we, so right now, that 24 budget, because we're underspending it this year relative to what best practices are, we're recommending, or we're starting with a budget that is in deficit and underspends what we're advised to spend for maintenance.
That's fair to say. I'd like to go to the tuition scenarios. We have been talking about a lot of different scenarios. And at this point for us, it is, it's a conversation, it's discussion. We are really following along to what's happening at the state level. And we're also having conversations internally about what kind of effect this might have on the institution and the institution's budget. So there are a few that I'd like to point out to you. The first one is scenario one, it's in that, in the blue area. And we want to show here what the effect is of 0% increase in tuition. And so our tuition is $132.50. And if you look at the very, very top line, you'll see a negative $4.5 million. That would be the deficit if there is no increase in tuition. And at that $759 million level that the governor has proposed, that's what scenario one is. So we want to show you that picture because that's a sobering picture for us. Again, we don't think that $759 million is actually where it's going to land. And we're certainly advocating for it not to land in that place. We also want to point out scenario two. Scenario two has a positive balance, you'll see that, does not have a deficit. It's $44,000, you'll see that at the top there. What that represents, though, is a pretty sobering tuition increase of about 20% to get us to that level. So these two scenarios, we don't think that either of these is going to be what we would recommend to the board. But we want to make sure that we show you that so that you can see really kind of a baseline of where we're starting from. I want to move to scenario four in the document. So scenario four starts with also a deficit, less of a deficit in fiscal year 24 than what we were projecting, about $2.3 million, $2.1 million. But it anticipates a higher overall funding amount for the Oregon Community Colleges of about $800 million. And it also presumes a 3.5% increase in tuition. Also want to move to the next page, and that would be scenario eight. We've also taken a look at not the $855 billion that the Higher Education Coordinating Commission has been, has asked on our behalf, which we support, all of the Oregon Community Colleges support that. We're thinking that it may We're thinking that it may come in lower and if it does, 810 million dollars, for example, with a four and a half percent increase in tuition, you can still see a lower deficit, an even lower deficit of 1.5 million dollars. We have taken these scenarios that I have just talked about, particularly scenario four and scenario eight. And we've looked at other percentage increases. We've looked at the HEPI, the Higher Education Price Index. We've looked at that. So five and a half percent. We've looked at also three and a half percent in both cases. Um, and we'd like to, we can share that, those numbers with you if you, if you like, but they really hover around the same area as in those scenarios that that I just talked about. Uh, we'd like for the board to um, receive this information and perhaps have a discussion about the information. What, where does the board see it? The institution falling potentially?
So that's our two board members who provide some feedback to President Balder.
Before we do, just to follow up the I don't think, but maybe you can correct me that these different scenarios, which are contemplating different tuition rate increases. Um, do we include any sensitivity analysis there? Like at some point, right? If you were going to raise it 20%, which I recognize you're not suggesting that, we would see a decrease in the number of in enrollment, right? Some students would just simply decide not to come, but we're right now, I don't think these numbers reflect that. They just assume everybody would pay whatever rate increase uh, we imposed on them. But in reality, of course, that wouldn't be the case. There's some elasticity there. Do we have any sense of what that is?
What the, what price would, what, what price would attract, continue to attract individuals and what price, what, what would be that ceiling?
Kind of a curve or something that would give us a sense of, you know, where we see significant um, uh, reaction from students?
Mm hmm. Well, we're certainly thinking now that incremental, small incremental increases will not be a detriment to to students and to attracting individuals. Brett, do you want to also jump in?
Yeah, one thing that we have historically tried to keep in mind when we've looked at any potential increases in tuition are the, the resources that are available to students, especially those with the most need. And unfortunately, the past two years in Congress, we've seen substantial increases to the maximum Pell Grant award, uh, $500 increases both years. So the maximum Pell Grant is closer to $7,000 going into next year um, for the students with most need. Uh, at the same time, the state has doubled the amount of Oregon Promise Grant uh, funding that goes to the students with most need from 1,000 to 2,000 dollars. Um, previously, there wasn't, by the time you subtracted other assistance, there wasn't oftentimes a lot of need left as far as the academic side. Now, we all know that the the biggest challenge that many of our students face are the living expenses. It's not, it's not tuition and it's not costs on campus. As a whole of the uh, the student budget, uh, tuition and fees and everything that they face on campus is about one fifth of their overall expense to go to college. And so we've, you know, tried pretty much each year to make sure that tuition increases don't outpace increases in the Pell or increases in assistance to the, the students with most need. But as we're watching rent prices go up 10% or 15%, that's what's kind of outpacing the, the financial resources that are available to students.
Simultaneous to our advocacy for the uh, the funding to come to community colleges is also advocacy for the Oregon Opportunity Grant. And that is a dramatic increase. Brett, would you like to speak to that?
Well, I don't want to take too much away from Austin's presentation when, when, when you see us here in an hour, but uh, the, the governor has included in her budget a uh, 50% increase to the annual budget for the Oregon Opportunity Grant Program. The Opportunity Grant is the state's main need-based program uh, for college students, similar to like the state's Pell Grant Program. Um, our ask for the session has been a 100% increase, so to take it from 200 million to 400 million. But uh, just knowing the, the, the budget constraints that they're facing in Salem and what some of their other priorities are. If we could see it go up a hundred million dollars, it would be a substantial win for students.
So I'm gonna put myself in the queue if you don't mind, Lisa. Um, it seems like the last time I heard a statistic, um, less than half of plane students actually access um, financial assistance. What is that percentage today?
I wonder, Dawn, would you have some, some idea? I wonder if that notion, what, that the notion was really about scholarships and I wonder if it was about need-based aid. Financial aid.
Yeah, I would really be interested to have that data. I need to know if we're, if we're relying on financial assistance to make up the difference for students, what percentage of our students actually access that? So I have Lisa and then Angela. Did you want in the queue, Mike?
Um, I just wanted to say that the question that Steve asked is actually something that I do in my own work at Pacific University and um, it's something that we're tracking fairly closely and I, I would say, I mean, it, you know, really different scenarios being a small private university, but um, it, the small, in the, the studies that I've seen, um, the small increases in tuition don't impact enrollment. Um, that's also information that um um, Provost Darrell shared with us when he was here at, at various points. It's those large increases in tuition like happened, I think before I was on the board that tend to have more of an impact, but what, what we see and what I see on a day-to-day basis is when students have access to funding through things like the opportunity grants and the Pell Grants, like tho- those are the things that they're really basing decisions on. And that when they lose services or they lose programs in an institution, that that has a very detrimental impact and often increases the length of time that they need to participate in, in their education to finish their, their goals and that dramatically increases the cost. So that, that's what I'm I'm seeing in my own um, experience in higher education and also some of the things that I remember noting from the information that Paul Darrell shared with us.
Angela?
Actually, I had spotted Holly's hands. I was just raising my hands on her behalf.
Oh, thank you, Holly.
Thanks, Angela. Um, I actually had the same question. Um, I was curious how many people at, or how many students that you at L C C receive financial aid? And it sounds like other board members had the same question. What's the percentage? And I'm talking about need-based aid because everybody doesn't apply for an opportunity grant. That's why I'm talking about Pell Grant eligible.
We appreciate the question from the board and we've heard it multiple times and we will make sure that we get you an answer.
Thank you. So other questions about scenarios? Or anything?
Well, not question so much, but I know you're looking for feedback. Where do we, you know, where are we on the, on these scenarios? Would you, um, sorry, there's a, could you roll up to the upper eight or whatever they were? I'll just throw out a starting point. I like scenario four.
Do you mind saying what, what it is about that?
Well, uh, sure, um, it cuts the deficit, the expected deficit in roughly in half from what the, you know, the initial starting point projection is. So that's you know, that much more manageable. It's um, a little bit more optimistic about the state funding, but not wildly so. Uh, it, and, and it keeps the tuition increase to three and a half percent, which is a number that I think I'm more comfortable with. I also appreciate that the um uh, the credit, um, the, the enrollment increase is sort of estimated at a conservative 2%. I think they all are. So that's not a, there's no difference there across any of the um, any of the options and we have reason to be optimistic that it'll exceed that. So I, I look at that three and a half percent thinking, well, maybe the governor's budget will come in a little higher. Maybe our credits will come in a little bit higher and that'll further chip away at the uh, deficit without having to raise tuition beyond three and a half percent.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Mike?
Yeah, I'm not prepared to zero in on a specific scenario at this point, but I, I can't say it's hard for me to imagine that we're not going to need a tuition increase.
Unfortunately. Lisa?
Um, so I, I, I really appreciate you sharing that, Steve. And I agree with what Mike just said and I we have a range to choose from and so when, you know, when we're, we're looking at these options, you know, we have that, we have the HEPI and then we have the state recommendation and so um, it's really helpful for me to see them played out in different places. You know, I, I know there are some other factors that are going to come into play as well, some that are going to potentially help us, you know, like maybe the governor's budget will be higher, maybe the C C S F will be higher, maybe the enrollment will be a little bit higher, but um, we also know there are going to be some other things that are going to trend us in the other direction, like the need to make sure we're maintaining our facilities. So um, but I, I do appreciate trending toward like thinking, keeping it conservative, you know, like the conservative um, focus and, you know, not being overly optimistic in a way that, you know, we that we are more hopeful than planful. But I, I found, I just also wanted to say, I really appreciated how you walked us through all of this. I felt like you used really like ba- I, not that it was simple language, but basic language that helped me understand it. It wasn't full of jargon and terms. I felt like I understood a lot more and was, you know, better informed after you went through it and I really appreciated that. And the scenarios um, are, are really useful. So thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Steve?
Only if others, the second round for me, others haven't had a chance to speak.
Angela?
Uh, I just have a process timeline question. Um, when we sort of expect to have, and I know I should know this by now, but I don't. When um, we'll expect to have that final budget amount and how much time that gives us to make our final budget?
We're gonna have no thunder for our presentation, just.
Would you like to jump in?
Uh, yeah, so uh, yeah, so we'll be getting a finite, uh, we'll be getting economic forecasts uh, coming May. Uh, that will give us a better understanding of what uh, the state expects the budget to be and, and different variables uh, that go into the budget. And then, um, yeah, later and going into the summer, there'll be a, a final budget that's um, signed and proposed. So. And the guy, yeah, and then keep in mind, that's the legislative budget. The governor's budget already came out. Um, so now it's about, uh, which again is kind of like a focal point of um, of the budgeting process. Now it's up to the legislators to make the final decision of what that uh, budget amount is, uh, which is why I say to this statement at the very beginning. And um, I hope they take note of that as they're going through this budgetary process.
The um, those, those dates, those months actually drive our work. So we expect to come back to the board by April in order to have this discussion a bit more firmly at that time.
So we have a really great student leadership, you know, th- this, this year in particular, we hear from them quite frequently. Um, I'm just wondering about the extent to which they are involved in tuition increase um, discussions, you know, do we, do we engage with them to say, hey, we're thinking about, or we, you know, some kind of a tuition increase? We want your feedback. We want you guys to run your, your own process and make recommendations back to us as to what you think students can absorb. Is there, what, how does that work currently?
Um, we have in the past.
Yep, thank you. Otherwise, people online can't hear you.
I was using my, my projecting voice. Um, we have in the past, um, just to kind of get a sense of um, uh, you know, where, where they are. Um, we've done presentations to them in the past as well, sort of all student forums. Uh, just trying to get some engagement and some feedback about how it would impact uh, students and what kind of an increase. Um, you know, would, would really have a significant sort of strain. Um, or if they felt comfortable with, um, I know that when we did like the $4.50 increase, we did a a, a campus-wide presentation just to kind of get students' feedback around uh, how they were feeling about it and, and what kind of position it would put them in if we did do it. So uh, we usually, we usually try to present that information before it comes out.
Just to follow up, I, I mean, I would love to hear from them directly, the student leadership, and you know, for them, for you all to engage with them, for them to see what the budget, the revenue and the expenses look like and the expectations or hopes from the state and all, they should get all of this in the, the leadership in any case, the same way that we are. And I would love to have them come to the podium at a meeting this month or next to say, to give us a sense of where they are.
Great. Sounds good.
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to tag on to Steve's comment. Uh, this student government has demonstrated they're particularly engaged, involved and um, in touch with what's going on. And I think that's an opportunity for us and that we dare not pass it up. And so we need to reach out to them specifically.
Lisa?
And um, I, I know I'll be attending um, OCCA's lobby days in March, in early March and um, I was wondering if we, we might have the opportunity to bring students with us for that, for that trip?
Yes, yes, we do. We've got plans to do that and Brett, maybe you, you take that one?
We've, we've, we've reached out. I haven't, I haven't followed back up this week, but um, that, that is our goal.
Great, thank you.
It's a little tougher for some of them.
Of course.
International students have different rules on their visas for participating in um events that influence legislation in the United States. So we just want to be respectful of those and not get anyone into trouble. Yeah.
Maybe there are members of the student government senate or whatever.
There's one at the moment, but there are, there are other student leaders on campus that will also reach out to, uh, it's a great opportunity for um, them to get experience like that.
Absolutely. And please note that uh, when you bring students, the elected representatives only want to talk to them. They want, won't talk to you, board members. They they want to hear the student stories. So just FYI, they will be the spotlight.
Do you mind? Long as we get our message.
If you don't mind, I just wanted to add that uh, we have a, the Budget Development Subcommittee that meets regularly and uh, some years, we've had very little student involvement on that. Adrian um, who was the chair this year, but just mentioned that we have two students that are very much involved regularly voting on um, things like what tuition increases they find it would be acceptable and um, so it's, it's just great to have them engaged this year and, and the regular development.
Awesome.
Amazing.
So um, the, the sense at this point is to err on the side of being conservative. Um, is there more direction that you desire, President Balder?
Not at this time. We, we really appreciate the, the, the conversation, the deliberation, um, and the thoughtfulness. Very much appreciate that. And we'll, you'll see us back again talking about this very topic in, in April, if not before.
And hopefully we continue to be on track to have our um, conversation in our March meetings about the result of our consultants' deep dive into our fiscal condition as an organization.
Yes, we're on track for that. It will be March 15th is the date, if I recall. That will be March 15th and they are, they are ready and set to go.
Great, great. Lisa?
I, I guess I was also curious since in May we'll have our usual um, budgeting process with our budget committee. Are we on track to be recruiting for that and um, getting, do we need new members for that? Oh, we don't need new members for that. Okay.
We're good to go.
We're good to go. Okay, awesome.
Two, two terms ending, two uh, members who want to continue to serve.
Fantastic.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And miracle of miracles, we actually spent 10 minutes less on this or close to 15 minutes less on this topic than we had budgeted. So compared to last meeting where we are uh, overachieving.
We'd do better without that clock.
Yeah, maybe.
Well, now Mike's good to take 10 minutes.
So our next topic is board policies. President Balder?
Yes, um, we have brought some board policies for the board to uh, consider and Mike Blade will walk, walk through them with us.
Great. So uh, before we get started, I just want to give you a little bit of a snapshot. We'll look back and, and then sort of where we're going. Um, there's eight policies tonight. Uh, when we finish those policies, we will um, have done all of the legally required or legally advised or accreditation required, accreditation revised, not including the ones that are in shared governance. Um, all the remaining policies, again, not in Um, all the remaining policies, again, not being the ones that are in shared governance, will be just suggested as good practice. So the breakdown is we've, there's 164 total policies. We will have reviewed. 97, really 103, because six of them we got kicked to, uh, shared governance. There's actually 26 in shared governors governance because they're, the 20 academic policies are also going to head there first. So there'll be 26 in shared governance and there'll be 41 left. Uh, 10 in the 5000s, which is the student services section, uh, 11 in the financial section, which is the 6000s. And then 20 in the human resources, which is the 7000s. So that's kind of where we are. It seems like we've done way more than 103, but. That's just, I, I, I was shocked by those numbers. Anyway, so on to the, uh, the board, the board policies in front of you. I just wanted to point out a handful of things. I think all of you got the red line, which, which had some changes. Uh, and 7120, which was the recruitment and hiring section. Um, I, I sent that over to Shane and Shane, Shane made the, the changes that you saw, uh, to con, uh, conform this with our practice. The sent it, the, on 7135, which is the faculty outside employment, after consulting with, um, uh, EA. We determined that probably taking that last sentence out of the first paragraph was a good idea. So we did that. Um, Dr. Bolger on 7160 professional development, uh, wanted to take that second, the, the optional, um, sentence out. And I think we've talked to everybody about that, right? So I think everybody understands why that happened. Uh, I did want to note on 7335, we added in the, the sort of the last sentence or paragraph. Which was Angela's paragraph about, um, protecting the information from the health, uh, examinations. And then on. Board policy 5500, uh, we, I took out the entire paragraph about the board, um, considering expulsions because that. Uh, does not comport with how we do that or what's in our student code of conduct. So those are why those changes were made. So at this point, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or try to.
Questions? Lisa?
Yeah. So I was wondering. Um, I, just for my own understanding, as we're navigating policy. Um, sometimes I see language that is, I'm looking for my note here. Sometimes it says procedures, administrative procedures, and then I think this is one of the first times that I've seen standards. The president to develop standards governing. Can you? Maybe shed some light for me on what the difference is between a standard and a procedure? I mean, I.
Which policy are we?
Well, in, in policy 7135, it says a standard. Um, and then in some of the others, it says procedures or administrative procedures. And I feel like. More typically, we usually, they usually says procedures or administrative procedures.
Yeah. So administrative procedures would be, I would think a sort of a step by step, how we're going to achieve a goal, whatever that goal is, right? Or how we're going to get there. A standard would be more like a. Code of ethics, right? Here, here's your, here are the, the, the statements that you must uphold rather than steps. Um, so that, that was.
Okay, that's really helpful.
I think that's really what they're talking about here. And, and honestly, this outside employment section is, is really geared towards. The public employee conflict of interest issues that you all, that we've talked about. I know in, in board training, we've talked about that. I think each year since I've been here and probably before my time. Um, you all sort of get trained on that every year, and I'm sure some of you could recite it yourselves. Um, but that's really what we're looking at here as far as, um. As far as faculty not, um, engage in some sort of outside employment, that's a conflict of interest with respect to the ORS rule. So we are not talking about. Um, you know. We're not trying to limit what faculty are doing outside of, of their employment here.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Mike?
I may be off base on this, but when I think of standards, I think of standards that are set by a professional. Association or accrediting association or something like that. Not so much standards that the president would say. I think of the president setting policies, uh, or procedures. So. For what it's worth, that's, that's what I think of when I think of those word.
I think that's true too.
Other questions? I have one. Um, I may have missed it, but, um, I was, I was reading the sort of the examples under, um. Faculty outside employment policy 7135 and nowhere did it say, I, or did I perceive it to be saying? That someone who's teaching here could also be teaching elsewhere.
Yeah, I, I, to be perfectly honest, I'm not sure why OCCA included this list because it's an including but not limited to. It's just sort of some examples. I think they were thinking, well, here are some things that faculty members might do, uh, generally, you know, uh, as a matter of course, consulting, things like that. But. Clearly we have folks, especially our part timers, and there may be, there may be some full timers as well that teach elsewhere, whether it be Lynn Benton or Rogue or.
Well, the fact that it's not listed doesn't.
Doesn't mean it, they can't do it. No, absolutely not. That would be really, uh, that would be. Bad situation for many, many of our faculty members. Yes. Yeah.
So it sounds as if, since I'm not hearing other questions, I'm looking, Holly, at you to see if you have any questions. No. Um, as if we're prepared to see these move on to our March, uh, meeting, uh, and the consent calendar.
I have one more thing. I, I just was wondering if we could, um, maybe somehow reference the code of conduct and, and BP, um, 5500. Cause you said that there is a very well-developed code of conduct and. I'm just wondering if we could provide a link or, you know, the way that you referenced it in other.
Yeah, it, and it's, yeah, absolutely. We could, we could do a, we could, so in the actual policy, you'd like to see a link kind of at the bottom, this student.
Yeah, something to just, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I can do that.
It's a.
Sounds like a good idea.
Great. Thank you. Yeah.
I think we did it. Yes, Steve.
I just want to publicly thank Angela for, once again, um, with a really good catch. Thank you.
As usual.
She's my Jiminy Cricket.
All right, we're going to move on to our third, uh, discussion item, which is a legislative update.
Yes, uh, we would like to have Brett Roulette and also I think board member Foney going to.
Do I have to get up or?
No, no, not at all.
You can leave me here. That's.
Yeah. Right. I have to do this all myself.
Yeah.
So yeah, I was just there. It does not look like that right now. Uh, it's in the construction.
What are they doing, Austin?
Um, seismic, um, uh, seismic supports, um, some restoration and other things that involve hard hats. So.
It's, it's one of the most unsafe buildings in the state of Oregon if there were to be an earthquake. We know there will be one soon and. Everyone who works in that building is hoping that the, the construction's done before that day comes.
Yeah.
Do you know something we don't know? He just used the word soon.
It's.
Geological.
Yeah.
Geological terms. Thousand years, Rosie.
Yeah, because I mean, it is important that we have a state government when that time period does come. So we do want, you know, obviously our capital, our legislative, uh, body to meet and our executive body to take action. So. That's, yeah, that's a big reason for it. Yeah.
All right. Well, the first thing we wanted to do was give you a real quick overview of what to expect with the legislative session. Uh, as you know, every other year, uh, our state has what's called the long session. And then in even years, we have a short session in, uh, the month of February that lasts about 40 days. In the odd numbered years, we, uh, the state approves a budget and, uh, does quite a bit more. Um, I think there's been about 3,000 bills introduced so far. Uh, the session began officially on January 17th. Uh, and as you all know, the governor's budget came out on the 31st, which kind of reset the conversation around the budget. Um, the governor's budget normally comes out around December 1st, uh, of leading up to the session, but because we have a new governor this year. Um, it has a little bit of a delay. And so that's why we saw it, uh, a, a week or so into the legislative session. Uh, this month is CTE month. Community colleges are celebrating it each Wednesday. OCCA is organizing a workforce Wednesday event where they're featuring CTE programs from around the state. Next Wednesday at noon, uh, we'll be featuring Lane's cybersecurity program. So. Make sure to check that government relations update this, uh, this weekend when it comes out and there'll be a link to, uh, to that event. As Austin mentioned earlier, there will be two revenue forecasts that come out, uh, one more important than the other, but, uh, the February 2nd revenue forecast that comes out next week. Is really going to give us a sense of what direction the economists think we're headed. Uh, for us to have an opportunity or a likelihood to see our, uh, support fund amount increased. We have to be hopeful that the, the revenue is moving in the right direction for that to happen. Uh, as you recall, three months ago, when the last revenue forecast came out, there was a little bit of pessimism. They really gave two forecasts. They said, this is what happens if we go into recession. This is what happens if we don't go into recession. We may have a little bit more clarity this time, um, but, uh, do anything you can, please, to support the state budget. Buy those scratch off lottery tickets this week. Anything you can do to. About, about that number next week. Uh, moving into, to March, uh, we'll have the OCC legislative summit that was referenced earlier. Uh, great opportunity to, one, learn more about everything that's going on, hear from our, uh, legislative leadership. Uh, Representative Livery, Lively from Springfield, who chairs the House Higher Ed Committee, as well as, uh, Senate President Rob Wagner, who, uh. Some of you may recall, used to work for Portland Community College years ago, before he became big and famous in the legislature, but, uh. Uh, it's great to have people with community college roots in influential positions like that to, uh, hopefully be our advocates. At the end of March, going into April is when we normally have the HECC, uh, budget hearings. That's when, uh, the public has an opportunity to come in and testify. Um, we'll bring up students, we'll bring up local business, we'll bring up, uh, you know, we work with the other colleges to make sure that we have diverse representation, both from business and from the colleges. Uh, but it's really our opportunity to testify in support of not just the community college support fund, but the entire HECC budget, which. Uh, also includes the university system, uh, and the, uh, OSAC budget, which is Oregon Opportunity Grant and state aid that's administered through the HECC. Can't see the bottom because of the, uh. Close captions there, but, um, just as the governor released her budget, uh, at the end of last month. The co-chairs of the Ways and Means Committee, the legislators that, uh, that run the budget process for both the House and Senate. They released what's called the co-chairs budget, and that typically comes out about the same time as the budget hearing. We never really know. Sometimes it comes out early. Sometimes it comes out a little bit into April. But, uh, what's important about it, that is when that comes out, it's really the legislatures. Uh, uh, stepping in and resetting the conversation around the budget. They're going to, you'll see the, the priorities of legislative leadership. They oftentimes have, especially when the same party controls both the legislative branch and the executive, they'll be in conversations to make sure that the priorities are very similar. But that's, uh, hopefully, uh, the first opportunity that we see, to see the needle move a little bit on the community college support fund.
Lisa, who's chairing the budget committee?
I'm drawing a blank at the second. Give me a moment now.
Okay.
The, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we have over 3,000 bills right now that are being considered in the legislature and, uh, for, to make sure that we all. Have a, a summer and that, uh, everything adjourns on time. There are deadlines set up that, uh, basically if a bill hasn't had hearings before a committee. And had a vote to, uh, to move forward, uh, they die. And so, uh, the first deadline that we have will be April 4th, and that's where we'll see a lot of the. Mainly policy bills, big bills like agency budgets are not going to, uh, to, to fall by the wayside. But we'll see, um, for the first time, that will be, uh, where we see kind of the funnel of the bills that are active in the legislature start to get narrowed down. Uh, then May 17th, that is the big day. That's when we get the May revenue forecast, and that's what the legislature has to use to set its budget for the next two years. Following that on May 19th is the second deadline. Uh, so if bills haven't gotten to the other side of the building, say a house bill, and you made it through the house side. If you haven't had your appearance before a senate committee and had a senate vote, the bill dies on that side. Uh, I should mention, you'll see a lot of relating clauses at the top of bills. Um, and we'll, we'll explain later how you can, uh, track down all of this information, but the relating to clauses. Oftentimes we'll say things like relating to nursing programs at community colleges. This session, we have seen a lot of relating clauses that are very vague, relating to education. Relating to nursing. Uh, and what that means is if legislators want to keep those bills alive, they can use a maneuver that's called a gut and stuff late in the session. And that's where they pass an amendment that basically deletes all the text in that bill and replaces it with something else. And so there's a lot of nervous lobbyists this session because as you get towards the end of session, they're basically referred to as zombie bills, the bills that don't really go away and die. And so we'll be, uh. Paying close attention to bills that are still alive as we get a little closer to the sunny day deadline, which constitutionally is June 25th. Uh, it takes both parties basically coming together with a super majority vote to, uh, keep us moving forward if, uh, they're not ready to adjourn by that point.
Excellent. So, um, all 17 community colleges are coming together for these legislative priorities. Uh, this includes state support, student aid, capital construction, and the, uh, back, back, back glory for nursing. Uh, we're, uh, on the state support side, we're looking to increase, uh, the state support by $155 million with a $50 million one-time funding to address, uh, address enrollment. Uh, $200 million increase to the Oregon Opportunity Grant and to the Oregon Promise Grant. Uh, $37.5 million for five different community colleges, construction project or capital constru- uh, construction projects, 8 million of which would go towards our building 16. And send bill 523, um, this is, uh, allows us to be able to pursue, um, our allow, uh, bachelors of science and, uh, nursing, uh, degree programs at community colleges. Um, which is, yeah.
Um, I, I think I read that the new governor does not support any capital construction money at all.
I get the slide with the bad news. Austin, Austin gets the, uh. Yeah. So I, I, I do, I.
My bad news.
Totally, totally, totally. Yeah. We, I just want to emphasize that these are our legislative priorities that we're fighting for at OCCA. And, um, yeah, yeah.
You go, Rosie. This is the, uh, the governor's budget. And for those of you that have gone through this process a few times, the governor's budget has historically kind of been our, our low mark. And, and that's for many reasons. Um, oftentimes there are proposals for new revenue that the legislature is considering. Uh, since those haven't passed, the governor's budget has to be balanced when it's released, and so it doesn't, uh, account for any new revenue. This time around though, uh, the governor is not proposing any new revenue, and I don't think we'll see a big push, uh, amongst legislature for that. There's not a lot of appetite coming out of, uh, the pandemic or the possible recession on the horizon. To, uh, to look at new revenue. Um, as far as state support, the governor has us penciled in at 759.7 million dollars. This is 2% less than. What DAS, the Department of Administrative Services considers to be the current service level for community colleges. You can ask three different agencies what our current service level is, and you will get different numbers from each of those agencies. The HECC has our current service level at 855 million. It just kind of gives you a sense of. Some are factoring in more, um, expenses than other agencies will. As far as student aid, the governor's budget does propose, as I mentioned earlier, a $100 million increase to the Oregon Opportunity Grant. This is important because oftentimes the opportunity grant program runs out funds before all students who would qualify receive those funds. And as I point out to, uh, legislators, often when I speak about this. Uh, usually when people lose a job, it doesn't come at the right time of year. It doesn't come when traditional students are getting ready for college. It comes the day after. Opportunity grant money is dispersed and is out. And, and so adding more resources to the pot is really going to help non-traditional students like ours that go to community colleges more than university students. Uh, capital construction, as you mentioned, there was no, uh, for the first time. I can recall, at least in the past 20 years or so, no capital projects included in the budget for universities or community colleges. There are a handful that were previously approved that, uh, are kind of in the pipeline that you'll see get voted on and re-approved in this session. But as far as new money, there is absolutely none that, that is in the governor's budget. Like we said, that's the governor's budget. Uh, the legislature may have its own budget, and I'm working with Jennifer and her team to, uh. Put together some talking points. You know, we have a shovel-ready project in building 16. Um, they've all, you know, the contractors have already given me estimates on how many jobs that's going to create over the two years of, of that project, right? And so. Uh, we'll talk about how it's impacting students, why it's necessary for our programs, the. the jobs it'll create for our community, and then we'll just put our hope in the uh in the legislature and um, you know, when you look at the five projects from community colleges, thirty seven point five million dollars. I think it was Nancy Nathanson, Representative Nathanson, when we had her on campus a few years ago, she said, you know, community college projects are a deal. Uh, they're oftentimes getting requests from the universities for two hundred million dollars for this and three hundred million dollars for that. So to be able to spend less than forty million dollars and hit colleges in all corners of the state, that's a pretty good deal. Um, the governor's budget doesn't include policy bills uh most often unless it's a priority issue for the governor. So um, there was no mention for the the our request for Bachelor of Science in Nursing in that budget.
So uh, this is uh, as we were mentioning before, this is what we're advocating for, uh, which is for the community college support fund. And uh, the ask is for uh eight hundred and fifty-five million uh with fifty million of one-time funding. Now, something that we'll be getting some pushback on from legislators is, you know, when you look at this graph here, oh, we've been giving you more and more money throughout the years, and yet enrollments are coming down and stuff like that. And that's where we really need to be pushing back that uh these are investments in the infrastructure of higher education. Uh, I I think when we had the uh legislators actually sitting right here and we spoke to them, I used the analogy of um, water infrastructure and droughts. You're a farmer, you don't uh not invest in your irrigation systems. You need to invest more into your irrigation system so that you could better be able to combat drought and the changing climate. So that's kind of a big pushback that we need to have with this legislative session as to why we need these additional funds and why we need to uh pursue this. Uh, this is an investment to allow for not only for us to continue as uh as institutions, but also so that we are better able to serve diverse population of students uh under um underserved population of students and to uh have the capacity that when we do see increases in enrollment, to be able to provide them the services and the education that will allow for the continued prosperity of the not only Oregon workforce, but economy.
Just to add on to that, as we as we get into the session a little bit further, and we have a better sense of what the economic forecast looks like. Uh, we'll have conversations with the OCC board and the presidents uh about, you know, how we might adjust our ask if if it's necessary to do that. I mean, nine hundred and five million dollars might not be realistic. Eight hundred and fifty-five dollar million dollars might not be realistic if it's a roll up. If it adds to the roll up of the state budget, if we got to say eight hundred and five million dollars with fifty million dollars one-time funding, that would get us to eight fifty-five, but we would start the next biennium back at eight oh five. So I mean, there's ways that we can have conversations and and um, I'm not going to give out hope that we can drive up this number a little bit. Uh, but like I said earlier, it does really fall on the economic forecast.
And let me also, before we move on to the next slide, uh, you remember the scenarios we were looking at previously, right? This, this is where those scenarios come into play. What does the legislators give us as far as this money? That give that determines our options that we have as a board to determine which one of those scenarios we have. So that's why I said at the very beginning here, that open letter to our elected officials, you have a play a big part in those uncontrolled variables that we have of which scenario would be the best option for us as a decision.
Steve, just a quick question. Do uh, when do we normally have to make our tuition uh or set tuition for the upcoming year?
Um, well, so this this is the every other year where you are asked to pass a budget not knowing the funding level that Salem is going to provide. And that's that's really a challenge. We oftentimes don't know until we get into June where things fall. And just because of the way the process works and the public notice you need to give for the budget, oftentimes that is ahead of the legislature. And so um, some of you may recall, we've uh, the board has in the past passed a budget based on what the legislature does. It was whether or not I I don't remember the exact details, but there was a five dollar emergency fee. And if the funding level was high enough, we would um, that it would kind of be rolled into funds that would be available to pay for instead of getting passed on to students. You could do something this time around where you pass multiple scenarios that's basically puts the the pressure on Salem. You can say, we're going to pass budget A if Salem gives us X amount, and we're going to pass budget B if Salem gives us Y and but.
Do we at least have the luxury of waiting for that second forecast before we have to finalize our budget?
I'd like to ask Dawn to just let us know when the students need to know for summer and for fall, what the tuition rate will be.
Yeah, so when registration opens for summer, so maybe.
Which is barely.
Yeah.
Okay, this slide just kind of points out uh as far as our ask for uh uh the financial assistance administered through the heck. Uh, the Oregon Opportunity Grant is the the largest state-funded need-based grant program. Uh, I included just the and to give you a sense of what students receive from this program, community college students uh part-time receive fifteen hundred dollars. Full-time students can receive up to thirty-six hundred dollars. And uh, we're optimistic because the governor has uh included such a substantial increase in her budget that there's support that will see this this um pushed in the right direction this session. The thing to keep in mind, a lot of uh especially students that are coming out of high school are traditional students, those with the most need will qualify for a Pell Grant, which is about seven thousand dollars, an opportunity grant with thirty-six hundred dollars. Uh, they'll get the 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 minimum two thousand dollars from the Oregon Promise Grant. Uh, and and their um tuition covered through that grant. And so uh, you're looking at at resources for some of our students with the most need that that is uh north of uh ten or eleven thousand dollars, which doesn't come close to to covering the twenty thousand dollars or so of what a total student budget is when you factor in all of the housing, lodging and transportation and those types of costs. But this is substantially more assistance than students uh received even five years ago. So things are are moving in the right direction there, just not as far as we would like them to be. Um, the Oregon Promise Grant is, as you know, is a program that serves recent high school grads and recent GED test completers uh with up to two years of uh to uh community college. Uh, and then there is a new program that was started in twenty twenty-two, the Oregon Tribal Student Grant uh program, and that basically covers the full cost of attendance for students from uh uh recognized tribes in Oregon. Um, the governor is proposing forty point two million dollars to uh maintain that program over the next biennium. I don't uh have any uh information on how many of those students actually come to community colleges, because they basically have uh everything covered. They can go to a university and the full bill is covered there. So um, I I don't believe that we have a lot of the students that take advantage of of this that come to community colleges, but we just don't have that that information from the heck.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's a few things I don't like about the governor's budget, but that uh tribal's um tribal student grant um funding, though, I think is uh really important uh to serving that population. So another part of uh why working together with other community colleges in this legislative session is we know what our capital uh construction projects that we want to pursue. Uh, what you see listed here are the different um uh community colleges that are requesting funding for capital construction. Um, um, and uh, yeah, essentially totaling to be about thirty uh seven point five million dollars. Uh, we're obviously there for uh building sixteen for our math and science improvements. Uh, but the other campuses are trying to develop their welcome uh welcome centers, their medical training uh centers, their uh uplift centers and run uh just basic renovations to safety access and so forth. So, yeah, this gives you an idea of uh the community colleges and our capital uh construction asks uh that we're making.
Uh, Austin mentioned this two weeks ago at the last meeting, but uh OLIS, if you have never uh hopped online and checked it out, it is a fabulous resource. Uh, Oregon has one of the easiest systems of any legislature in the in the country to follow, to become involved. Uh, and OLIS, if you go to oregonlegislature.gov, you can click towards the top right. There's a link for OLIS. You are able to look up any piece of legislation. You can see the history of that legislation. If it's had two hearings already, you can watch the recordings of those hearings. You can see proposed amendments that are being made. If there are staff summaries on bills, you can read that. If there's going to be a fiscal impact, I mean, you can really, you can geek out like us political nerds if if you really want to. But if you if you haven't checked it out, I I really encourage you to at least take take a peek at it. Um, when when I send out the government relations updates each week and I have the committee hearings listed, if you click on the bill number, it will take you into OLIS to the the page for that particular bill. So it's it is incredibly uh useful website, and I spend way too much time on it.
Yes. And yeah, you can also follow bills, see when those committees are going to be meeting, variety of other different useful tools. Now, it's one thing to follow a bill. It's another thing to advocate for a bill. And that and uh OCCA is uh uh we're using Voter Voice. It's an app that's available uh to you to be able to reach out to your senators, send letters to your senators, emails to your senators, additional uh ways to get ahold of them, contact them and so forth. And it's a great way to kind of organize your advocacy uh for certain bills. Uh, they've uh OCCA has recommended all of us to um uh use Voter of Voice. Um, it's actually, in my personal opinion, a really helpful, useful tool uh for uh our um fellow board members, students who are watching and advocate and community uh advocates uh that are watching, I encourage you to use Voter Voice to help um uh urge our senators, our house representatives to um actually advocate for some of the things that we're uh supported that we're tracking with OCCA as well. So uh, yeah, this is a and also um I just wanted to kind of emphasize again, on March eighth and ninth, uh, we'll have the OCCA legislative uh summit. If you're able to attend as board members, please, please come. This is a really important time period to get in front of our legislators in person, and that's is even um uh amplified by your consistent contact with them prior to meeting them in person.
So about that, I plan to attend, but on the ninth and not the eighth, because I didn't want to um incur a hotel bill um for the college. So will we get some information in advance about where to find our our colleagues?
Yes, it's going to be a little bit more challenging this year because of the construction in the Capitol. There um aren't a lot of places to hang out inside the building. So the OCCA office, which is about four blocks from the Capitol, will be open um for the day. I'm going to do my best to schedule as many meetings as I can back to back to back um so that we're not left with one or two hour gaps between meetings. Um, we're kind of at the mercy of their committee and vote schedules that day, so we will do our best. And then I'm sure at the last minute, we'll have a few rescheduled on us, but um, that's that's just kind of how it works. But uh, yeah, well, um I'll work with uh Celia to uh make sure that I know everyone who's going to be joining us and and that you're included in the the email of of our schedules for the day.
Mike.
I'm wondering if uh we could also ask Celia to check with us on ride share kind of stuff. Because I I also don't plan to spend the night, but I in my nineteen ninety-eight pickup, won't make the trip. Uh, but I'd be glad to ride share with somebody.
That'd be great. Yeah, I'd be interested in that.
Excellent.
Um, the last few pages in the presentation was more of a reference for you. I I wasn't going to try to fill the whole hour, even though we're ahead of schedule tonight, but I did want to include just to give you a sense, you know, there's about uh three thousand to four thousand bills, I think, that are going to be active this session. Um, with OCCA's help, we prioritize them one through five. Uh, I included the priority one and two bills. Uh, priority one are basically bills that change life as we know it. Um, so it's uh um, basically, it's our our main asks of our budget and uh the ability to offer a Bachelor of Science of Nursing. Um, prior priority two are the other ones included on this list. Uh, and if you would like, I'm happy to discuss any of them, or if you want to grab me offline, we can we can talk a little bit more in depth on on any of these, but as you, you know, look through these, if if you're interested in any of them, please check out OLIS um and and put it to work. You can um find a good summary and and the current version of all of these bills on there.
Absolutely. And many of these are things that we're tracking, not necessarily have an opinion about, but it's more just like a follow, yeah, just following them along and so forth. And yeah, these are ones and twos, and uh some of them um would definitely change the landscape of higher education. Um, and some of um uh and 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 others are things that, yeah, we absolutely support and uh um and are and are tracking them. So yeah, these are perfect bill numbers to add to OLIS. And these are perfect bill numbers to um uh reference uh in your um uh Voter Voice as well. So.
And and you'll notice it's where since money is tight this year, uh, you will see a lot of studies proposed. If yes, if I was in charge of the heck right now, I would, I mean, I know that Ben supports everything the governor has put forward, because that's what, as soon as the governor's budget comes out, all agencies fall in line behind the governor's budget. So you won't hear the heck advocating for our eight hundred and fifty-five million dollar ask anymore. The heck is officially supportive of the governor's budget. That's just how things work when you work for the governor. Um, but you you'll see a lot of studies proposed. Um, and you know, unless it's a priority, there's a lot of bills that propose five million for this, five million for that. It's going to be very difficult for those bills to get past Ways and Means. You will see a lot of bills get a hearing. They'll probably even have favorable votes in their policy committee. And then they'll get sent to Ways and Means, and that's usually where bills go to die a quiet death. Um, because they'll just sit there and oftentimes wait until that final revenue forecast number comes out, so they see if they have money to deal with that. But um, the governor has put together such an ambitious request for dealing with homelessness in in the state of Oregon that there's not going to be a lot of extra money, and I don't expect a huge, what they refer to as a Christmas tree bill at the end of session, where folks are getting a lot of uh one-time funding dispersed.
Great presentation, both of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or observations from board members? Thank you very much. I really, I really appreciated that.
Absolutely.
Um, in closing, there are future meeting dates and agenda items um in your packet. Uh, I noted that uh and mentioned to Celia that the um proposed date for a July retreat does not appear on that list, but we'll get it on there. And uh, hopefully then you can hold the time so that you can retreat in July as usual. And uh, just a quick question, is there anything for the good of the order before we adjourn? There being none. We are adjourned.
Great job.